Thank you very much. We'll now move on to postpone items. We have the rules of procedure that were postponed from the November 14th council meeting. Is there anyone that...
Madam Mayor.
Council, I mean Mayor Protem Kerr...
Oh, God.
McGinnis?
Actually, at this time, I am going to move to postpone this item until an event certain. That would be for us to have an opportunity to have a study session on the rules of procedure, and then we can discuss the fruits of our labor at the study session at the next regular business meeting. And if I can have a second, I can explain in more detail what my thought is.
Okay. Well, we have a motion to postpone the item till a date uncertain so that we can have a study session forwarded by Mayor Protem Kerr... Oh, here I go. McGinnis, and it was seconded by Councilman Teets.
Yes.
Councilman Campbell. So, is there any discussion? Mayor Protem McGinnis.
And I'll just expand on that briefly. Here's my thought process. I just think that the format in a study session would be more suitable for us. There were a lot of changes that were originally proposed, and there may be additional changes by council members when we're in a more informal setting. That will give us an opportunity to have discussion about each of the changes. We won't be bound to the same set of rules as we would be here relative to parliamentary procedure. We would still be able to build consensus about each of the things that we're discussing, and then I think when we come back to the regular business meeting with the document in front of us, we'll be able to move forward and all be on the same page. So, it's what we've done in the past, and I thought it worked very well. So, I think that we can pick a date to do that, pick a study session today. And that way, we'll also be able to get feedback from the city attorney during that discussions. There are a couple of things that I saw that were proposed, and I'd just like to kind of further flesh out how they would align themselves with the Open Meetings Act, and I think we could have a more in-depth discussion. So, that's my purpose for requesting that we postpone this item right now.
Is there any other comments? Councilman Fleming?
Could we have a date certain? I know that next week, on the 28th, we have a session on the library, I believe. That's going to be discussed then. I don't know if we want to try to do it that session, or we want to try to postpone it for two weeks, which would be December the 5th. What's your pleasure?
Mayor Protem?
Do we have a regular business meeting on the 5th already?
We have a regular business meeting on December the 5th.
Yes.
I think that would be a good, yeah, I think that would be a good date for us to postpone the rules of procedure discussion. I agree, I did not make that many rule changes. Actually, the major portion of the extent of the changes was to expand public comments, as you saw tonight. I kind of like to see the people be able to talk at different points throughout the meeting, as it used to be in 2008. And that's the, that was the rules of procedure that I used as a format for what I presented, and there were also changes to the, the assigning of the Mayor Protem. But there weren't that many changes, those, but they were significant enough that I think a study session would be in order. Any discussion? A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner?
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teets?
Yes.
Motion passes. So, it was resolved to postpone the rules of procedure until December 5th, and so we'll move on to regular business. We have a board appointment that we had forwarded at the last meeting, and today's the day that we'll be voting on that. Is there anyone that would like to bring a motion?
Mayor?
Madam Mayor.
Sorry. There will be, need to be a tally vote, as it was late, excuse me, as it was laid on the table this evening, between Councilmember Fleming and Mayor Protem McGinnis for that seat.
Okay, so...
So, what will happen is I'll call each council member's name. You just need to indicate which choice you make, and that will be recorded. That name will be entered into the resolution, and then we'll vote on the resolution.
I see. Okay.
Fleming.
Councilmember Henderson?
Fleming.
Council, or, excuse me, Mayor Protem McGinnis?
McGinnis.
Councilmember Slater?
McGinnis.
Councilmember Teets?
Fleming.
Mayor Daniels?
Fleming.
So, then Mayor, so, excuse me, so then Councilmember Fleming's name will be entered into that resolution?
Okay. Did someone want to make the resolution? Is this a time for discussion, Mrs. Bittner?
You would need a move in a second in order to...
I don't think you called on Councilman Fleming.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Fleming.
Fleming.
Okay. Now, would someone like to make the resolution?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Be hereby resolved that Troy City Council appoints Wade Fleming to serve on the Employee Retirement System Board of Trustees in Retirement Healthcare Benefits Plan and Trust for an unexpired term, for a term that will expire, I'm sorry, April 15th of 2012.
Court.
Okay. The resolution was forwarded by Mayor Protem McGinnis and seconded by Councilman Slater. Is there any discussion? No discussion? Can we have a vote, please, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teets?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes. So, motion passes, or resolution passes that Councilman Wade Fleming will, the Troy City Council hereby forwards the Councilman Fleming to serve on the board, as indicated, next, to the next regular city council meeting for action. No, that's not, I wasn't supposed to read that, but we're done. It's accomplished. Okay. There's a Parks and Recreation Board appointment?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Be hereby resolved that the Troy City Council hereby forwards Aditya Yalamanchi to serve on the boards and committees, as indicated, to the next regular city council meeting for action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Resolution was made by Mayor Protem McGinnis, seconded by Councilman Slater, that Adidas...
Aditya Yalamanchi.
Aditya Yalamanchi be appointed to the Parks and Recreation Board. Is there any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am?
If I could just provide some background, I did have an opportunity to review the application, and Mr. Yalamanchi had previously put in his application. It was updated. He is a 10th grader, 15 years old, attending International Academy East, and I did speak with him on the telephone today, and he indicated that although he filled out the application a little while back, he is still very much interested as serving as a student liaison to the Parks and Recreation Board, and that's why I forwarded his name for nomination tonight.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teets?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Do we have any other appointments to the Parks and Recreation Board this evening? No? Then we would move on to the Southeastern Michigan, or do I have to say something? Do I have to conclude the, the last appointment? Okay, then we are moving on to the Southeastern Michigan Council of Governments, SEMCOG. Is there anyone that would like to make an appointment? Mayor Protem McGinnis?
I promise I'll be quiet for a few minutes after this. I do have two names to forward, to be placed into nomination for the, for SEMCOG, Southeastern Michigan Council of Governments. One would be our city council delegate, and I am nominating James Campbell at this time for a term that expires on November 11th, 2013. I am also nominating Mark Miller. He is our real estate development director, obviously, city staff, and he would be the alternate for a term that expires November 11th, 2013. And I do believe that it's a requirement that the delegate is a city council member, hence I'm nominating James Campbell, and the alternate is our director, Mark Miller.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So, the appointment was made by Mayor Protem McGinnis to appoint Councilman James Campbell and Manager Mark Miller to the appointments of the Southeastern Michigan Council of Governments, and is there any discussion? It was seconded by Councilman Fleming. Any discussion? None noted. Could we have a vote, please, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teets?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. So, we have our appointments to the SEMCOG. That's good. The next item on the agenda. There is no closed sessions. We have a bid waiver for professional services, the Police Department promotional testing services, I-4, and I wonder if someone would like to move this resolution?
Mayor?
Councilman Fleming?
I'll move this resolution as printed, I-4, as printed.
Do we have a second?
All second.
Motion was moved by Councilman Fleming, seconded by Councilman Teets. Is there any discussion? No discussion. Mrs. Bittner, vote, please.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teets?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. We're going to discuss the 2012 city council meeting schedule. There's a resolution. Would someone like to present the resolution? Resolution is to hold regular meetings in 2012 according to the following schedule: Monday, January the 9th and the 23rd; Monday, February the 6th and the 20th; Monday, March 5th and 19th; Monday, April 2nd and 16th; Monday, May 7th and 14th. I would resolve that we pass that.
More dates.
I'm sorry, is there more? Oh, there's more dates. I see, Monday, June 4th and 18th; Monday, July 9th and 23rd; Monday, August 13th and 27th; Monday, September 10th and 24th; Monday, October 8th and 22nd; Monday, November 12th and 26th; Monday, December 3rd and 17th. And then we have some special study sessions scheduled for Monday, April 23rd; Monday, April 30th. It is also resolved that city council may schedule other special meetings as needed.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I will move the resolution as printed.
Okay, and is there a second? Okay, the resolution was moved by Mayor Protem Kerrwin and seconded by Councilman Teets. I said Kerrwin again, I got you. I'm sorry. You know, it took a long time to, to get used to the new Mayor Protem. Yeah, I'm sorry. I do apologize sincerely. And it was seconded by Councilman Campbell. Yeah, you guys, ventriloquism here.
Very simple.
Is there any discussion? Can we have a vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teets?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes. Motion passes. We have a number of resolutions to revoke industrial facilities exemption certificates. Is there some way that we can handle these? Councilman Fleming?
I believe I noted a communication on I-6, Mayor, where this particular company, Forcia Automotive Seating, had not responded to information that had been sent to them regarding this revoking their exemption certificate. I think the recommendation from management, and maybe someone wants to speak to that, is to postpone this until at least we get some feedback from this Forcia Automotive on I-6.
Commissioner Zerli?
Yes, Your Honor, that's correct. We had just today received notice of, I think it's returned to sender, and not the Elvis Presley song, but the letter that we sent out came back. Is that correct, Mr. Lucari? And so, we wanted to give due notice and make sure that this company did receive an indication of what we planned on doing, and so we'd like to pull that item, but then recommend passing the other items, and I think we can probably pass them all at the same time.
So, we'll just postpone I-6?
No. Madam Mayor, members of council, thank you for having me. They do need to be voted on individually because you can, by no action, allow either of the companies to continue with their abatement. Obviously, we wouldn't recommend that for Eco Motors because they have relocated outside of the city of Troy. So, staff's recommendation is, is that it would be imperative to remove that exemption. The issue with Pro Metal, the state law technically says 5% above or below needs another resolution from council. They have spent about 71% of the dollars that they contracted with us to spend. That's obviously quite a bit more than 5% in either direction. They did not respond to the letter. We have to assume that they, they got it because it was sent by certified mail. We did receive our copy back. In the instance of Forcia, they never picked up the copy. It was, tried to be delivered at their office. They refused delivery. The mail, the postal system at that point in time just leaves them a notice. You have a certified mail to pick up. After all this time, today, I got the notice that they failed to pick it up and that they were not going to try to redeliver that. So, that item, we're expecting to come back late in December on. We, I will call them personally to get some reaction from this, on this. But Eco Motors is definitely in Allen Park. They were not scheduled to move in until the middle of next year. They're already there. They did get a tax abatement from Allen Park. They do have mega incentives from the state. There's really no reason for us to leave that one in, in place. But they do need to be voted on individually.
I see.
Because the decision is yours on Pro Metal.
Thank you very much. So, the first, oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Slater?
Oh, I'm going to move to pull item I-6 from the agenda and place it on the December 19th, 2011 agenda.
I would second that. So, the motion was made by Councilman Slater to postpone the decision on Forcia till December 19th, so that we can have an opportunity to get in contact with them, and Mayor Daniels seconded. Is there any discussion? No discussion? A vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember...
I'm sorry, excuse me.
I have one quick question. Is December 19th going to be a date that we can accomplish this by? I would like to just hear your feedback before we actually...
I believe that gives me plenty of time. As I said, I'll contact them directly. If need be, we'll hand-deliver the notification, but I don't expect to have any problems this time.
It's the date that you gave us.
Yes, exactly. That's why I, I did it, because it does give me enough time to get the 10 days notification in, which I'm required to do.
Okay. Thank you. A vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Teets?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. The next item is the resolution to revoke the industrial facilities exemption certificate for Eco, what is that, Eco Motors? And as, is there any discussion?
Mayor, I'll move the resolution I-7 to revoke an industrial facilities exemption certificate and vacate an industrial development district previously granted and established for Eco Motors International at 1055 West Square Lake, as printed. Court.
Okay, the motion was forwarded by Councilman Fleming and seconded by Councilman Slater. Any discussion? Councilman Teets?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, this is another classic example why tax abatements don't work. Trying to pick winners and losers. Trying to pick winners and losers, and in this case, they just shopped around and picked another city to do business in. And going forward, I'll be opposing tax abatements for businesses because it's not our job to pick which businesses should succeed or fail in this city. And it's a perfect example, like many others, where business chose to do business elsewhere just because they shopped a better deal. And I don't think we should be playing those sorts of games. Let's put an even playing field for all businesses so we can succeed as a city. So I'll be voting yes.
Thank you. Any other discussion? A vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Motion passes. I-8 is the resolution to revoke an industrial facilities exemption for the Pro Metal RTC company. Someone want to make the resolution? Councilman Slater?
I'll move the resolution as printed.
Support.
Okay. Motion moved by Councilman Slater and seconded by Mayor Protem McGinnis. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir, Councilman Henderson?
I am not against all tax abatements for business in Troy. I think in tough economic times, you need to bring as many businesses here as you can. That said, these folks have fulfilled 71% of their obligation to the city of Troy in really bad economic times. And I don't know what procedure would be, but, you know, I'd be willing to talk about billing back the 29% that they didn't fulfill or just letting this ride. Again, I don't know the procedure or what city comments on.
Madam Mayor, members of council, it's an all or nothing proposition. If the resolution fails that's in front of you, they'll continue with the abatement based on the property that they have purchased. There are no provisions for prorating any portion of it at that point in time.
Could there be anything different done in the future? I mean, could we make some kind of a resolution to give them a partial?
Well, in effect, you would be. You'd be granting them an abatement on what they purchased regardless of what they spent. In other words, the state law does require the letter of agreement, and that's what they're in violation of. That's a contract that they've signed with the city. And again, by the motion failing, you would just continue the abatement as it is with whatever they happened to purchase at this point in time.
Did you have discussions with them as to why they?
They did not explain that at all. The other issue was they were supposed to provide me with documentation of a certain number of jobs that were provided with the abatement. And all that they could tell me was they didn't, they couldn't spend what they thought they were going to spend.
I see.
It is, if you look at this one in comparison to the Forcia abatement, Forcia was going to spend about $1 million. They're a global corporation. This is a small job shop here in Troy, and they spent $2.7 million. It was a major undertaking for them. It's not the $3.1 million that they were going to spend, but it's still $2.7 million in a little 14,000-square-foot shop. So, I mean, they did buy a considerable amount of equipment. It is my responsibility to report to you that they did not spend the $3.1 million. And again, it is your purview to decide whether to continue the abatement with the $2.7 or to cancel it entirely. But that's your only two options. It either continues as it is, or you cancel it.
I see. Mayor Protem McGinnis?
I have two questions. If we take no action on this, will it continue without any opportunity to revisit it?
Yes.
So we're making a decision tonight, and that will be the end of it?
Yes.
And then my other question to you was, if we decided to cancel it, is that automatically going to trigger the fact that we have to ask for the abatement back?
Yes.
Okay.
That's part of the terms of the agreement. The state law specifies the agreement because the local unit of government has the ability to make this particular law more stringent. So you're required to have a letter of agreement, and I know this is new ground several of you, you're required to have a letter of agreement that specifies the penalty for not complying. And that's what this letter of agreement does. It specifies that we will collect the abated taxes that they've already enjoyed.
What kind of a dollar amount are we speaking about?
This particular one is $41,657. So, and it, obviously, it's higher since personal property depreciates by age, and this is only a two-year abatement at this point in time. The property is worth much more money as it's new. As it gets older, their abatement actually fades as the value of the property decreases. So does the value of their abatement. So they've enjoyed so far $41,657 in abated taxes. That would be the amount of money that we'd be collecting. Now, that's not all city taxes. That includes everyone, city, schools, county, transportation, every tax that's out there, basically. And we would have to prorate that money back to those other taxing entities.
How stable is this business? I mean, are we going to drive them out of business if we do this to them?
Well, I can't answer for them. Again, it was a considerable investment for them, and they seem to be making a goal of it. I can't tell you that the $41,000 is going to make or break them. I'm not privy to that information.
Is there a third option that we can? I'm sorry, for controlling the conversation here, but is there a third option that we can give them a little extension or something to just, based on the fact that we are in such difficult economic times? And quite frankly, we wouldn't want to do this if it's going to drive them out of business. I don't want to, I don't like the thought that they broke a contract, but we're in unique economic times, as you know, better than anybody or as well as anybody. So it seems punitive in a sense, and yet I want to be able to stick to the agreements that we do make.
Without speaking for the council, if your intent is to help the business and to keep them operating, then you just let it ride. Whether or not they're going to fail because of the $41,000, really, that's not our business. If they do fail, even with the abatement, we don't get anything back. There's no one to bill. If they close up shop and leave tomorrow, that's what they've done. So at the time that these abatements were granted, council's thoughts publicly were that a half a loaf is better than none. You've got a half a loaf of $2.7 million here as opposed to half a loaf of $3.1. Whether or not the company fails because of the abatement or not, that's a heavy weight that you have to carry.
How many employees does this company employ?
They don't have many. There were 14 before they had the abatement. I believe they were only supposed to put on another three. It's pretty much a single piece of machinery that they bought that does very special work, very specialized work. So they bought it with existing contracts. That's why they bought the equipment. They had contracts in place.
Yes, Councilman Slater?
You reached out, you, excuse me, you reached out to them and they didn't respond to you? Is that what happened?
The response was that was all they could spend.
The response was that was all they could spend?
That was all they could spend at that point in time.
Okay. I think I want to amend my resolution to take no action.
Okay, so how do we amend the resolution at this point?
There could be an amendment proposed. You have an active resolution, active motion on the floor right now, but you could make an amendment to amend the resolution to take no action on this item.
Before we vote on this, we make?
You wouldn't vote on, you wouldn't, instead of voting on the active motion, you would make a motion?
Mayor? I would second his amendment that we take no action on this.
Mayor? Mayor, I'm sorry. Another option that you may have as well is just to not vote in favor of the resolution. If it's your goal to not, you know, to not require them to pay this money back, then your response, your vote on this matter would be a no. That might be a little easier procedurally.
Okay, so just vote no, and it'll take away the resolution, and it'll continue the abatement, and then?
Status quo would be accomplished by voting no on this?
And then what would we do going forward, though, Mr. Lucari? I'm really curious to know how we can uphold our contracts and?
There would be nothing else.
It's our interest.
There would be nothing else required of council at that point in time. Again, it was my duty to report to you that they have not reached those terms. If you're okay with that, then it's a dead issue at this point. The exemption continues until it expires.
And when does it expire? I'm sorry.
That's all right. This is a 12-year abatement, so it would run till 2022. They got, they qualify for the full length of time, which is 12 years. That's the maximum.
Well, I sure would be interested to see if they're a viable business and, yes, Councilman?
No, I own a small machine tool company, and I could tell you, $40,000 is a lot of money for any small company. That's probably their payroll for the next week or two weeks. So, not knowing what they do, I hate to be the ones to put a guy out of business for an abatement that we're still getting some value from and put people out of a job and also shut down one more building in Stephens in a suburb that's might be located. So I would vote to let it go.
Two things, Your Honor, thank you. One is that in addition to the actual capital infusion that they promised, they also promised to add three jobs. Do we know if they've done that? Yes. So they do care of the adding of jobs for that equation. That's one consideration you may want to take a look at. Another, and it's not germane to this issue per se, but going forward, we do have guidelines that I'd like to have staff present to you and actually have you review and ratify those guidelines going forward so that we know what we can offer businesses or what we can't offer businesses as part of an incentive to locate in Troy.
That would be very good. That would be very helpful, yes. Well, Councilman Slater?
I think we just need to look at things on a case-by-case basis, and this is certainly different than most. And I think we all don't want to drive business out. We want to bring business here. So I think we're looking at this as a different incident than we normally see. So I have a technical question for the clerk. I did make a motion, second motion, do I have to now amend something else now?
You're talking about the motion that?
I made an amendment to take no action.
You can withdraw that.
I will withdraw that.
The only danger I would see is that we would continue this in terms of all of a sudden companies saying, well, we don't have to live up to our obligations now. The city of Troy is going to go light. I don't want to do that either. I'm hoping that with some of the information that Manager Zerlik will be providing to us, we can look at the issues individually from that aspect, too, because I don't want Troy to become some kind of a rug where people wipe their feet and they don't care about the obligations to our contracts.
Yeah, the other issue is that along with the policy resolution that Mrs. Zerlik would like to present to you, is that you can modify the letter of agreement. You can specify the terms. The state law, again, is 5% either direction. You can make it larger than that. You can make it smaller than that. You can make it 29%. And so we will, I'm assuming, we'll present that letter to you at that point in time, too. Because the contract is modifiable, just like your policy resolution is modifiable. If your voice has changed, you change the contract. If your voice has changed, you change the policy resolution. It's as simple as that.
Madam Mayor?
Councilman Teetz?
You don't know what my comments will be, but we're giving a $40,000 subsidy to this business over any other business that competes with them. Or we have already given that. We're going to guarantee that to them with this vote if you vote no. And I just don't think that's fair, and that's, you know, the opposite of free enterprise, so.
Any other discussion? Well, we'll have a vote then, Mrs. Bittner? On the original motion to revoke the abatement?
Councilmember Campbell?
No.
Councilmember Fleming?
No.
Councilmember Henderson?
No.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
No.
Councilmember Slater?
No.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
No.
Motion fails then, yes, yes. There you go. Okay, good experience. Now, we'll move on to the reconsidering substitution of resolution approving industrial facilities exemption certificate for Solzermetco Incorporated. Does anyone want to make the resolution? Councilman Slater?
I have a question first. Is this the language omission issue that we've had in the past?
It is. And again, for the newer council members, let me just explain. Between last September and currently, the State Tax Commission changed the language that they wanted to see in resolutions approving tax abatements. And basically, the language has to say that the total of all of our tax-abated property would be less than 5% of our total assessed value roll. That's the case. I mean, we're less than 3/10 of 1% of our total roll. What happened in this particular instance was last, I think it was last August a year ago, or maybe it was last September, council approved two tax abatements on the same night. We sent them off to the State Tax Commission because they have final approval on them. They thought the second tax abatement was a copy of the first one and threw it away. We did manage to catch it. We sent them all the information that we had along with the resolution approving the abatement, but since that year had gone by, they requested that the council revisit and add the language in. Even though they approved the first one, they wanted us to correct this. This is basically housecleaning. We're just cleaning up the resolution so that the State Tax Commission will approve it. This company's been waiting over a year now for this abatement to be approved by the state, and quite frankly, the holdup wasn't ours. It was the state's problem. So all we're asking you to do is approve the language that says that our tax abatement rule is less than 5% of our total roll, which it's very much less than our total roll. That's all this does. It requires a lot of language here, but the easiest thing to do is just approve the resolution as submitted. We did this twice before, as Councilman Slater pointed out. We had this problem with two other abatements that we had granted, and in between the time that we granted them, the state changed the rule. So we brought just the resolution back for cleaning up, and that's what this does. And then we can move forward for these people so they can qualify for their abatement because this is all that's holding them up at this point in time.
So this is our first opportunity as a new council to vote on our overall position in terms of tax abatements. Is that correct?
No, because you don't have any information, quite frankly, in front of you. All you've got is just this cleanup of this language. I added one paragraph to a resolution that was approved by a prior council. But the state will require this, or they won't even look at this application, which is a shame, quite frankly. They approved the other one that was approved the same day without this language in it.
Is there any discussion?
No. I'm going to move the resolution as printed, including the amended, hey, the amendment. And basically, we already approved this through the last council, and I thought we had cleaned up everything, but apparently there's one left, and it's just a technicality. So I'll move the resolution as printed.
Support. Resolution, oh?
My, I have a, an interesting situation here. My company does work for this company, not this division, but for their home company. So I don't know whether it's right for me to be voting for this or not voting for this.
Is it a conflict of interest?
Madam Mayor, I would thank Councilman Campbell for disclosing that. I'm not sure that the other remaining members of council would find that that is a conflict. I think, again, thank you for the disclosure. I think it's probably appropriate. I'm assuming that you don't receive 10% or more from?
How much?
10% of more?[1696.31]
10%, no, not that much.
That's generally a standard.
So, basically, if we all have no problem with Councilman Campbell voting with us, then it's okay. Is there any other discussion? I just would like to say that I don't like tax abatements, but in deference to the previous council, I think it's only fair that we go ahead and let them have their vote and just move on to the next issue and deal with the tax abatements as they come to us in the future. That would be my thoughts. Vote, oh, Councilman, gosh, Teetz?
Again, I'm not going to let the mistakes of yesterday affect the decisions of today, and there'll be other issues coming up, even the discussion of the Transit Center, where we'll be talking about the opportunity cost today, and I don't think we want to talk about the sunk cost of yesterday. So, I will be voting no again, because I don't feel like we should be subsidizing one business over another, and if you're not receiving tax subsidies and you're a business owner in the city of Troy, I'm sorry, and hopefully you'll stay here, and we'll make Troy a better place for business for everybody, so.
A vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
No.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Lucari. We'll move on now to proposed resolution to amend reconsidered resolution. Oh, we already did that one. We're on the consent agenda items, so we can approve all of the J items that are not removed for discussion. Does anyone have any items they would like removed from the consent agenda? So, do we have a resolution again?
I resolve that Troy City Council hereby approves all items on the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second? Okay, moved by Councilman Fleming and seconded by Councilman Campbell. Thank you. Is there any discussion? Vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. Miss Councilman, Teetz?
I would like to, at this point, suspend the rules and jump down to the study session and go to that right now.
Okay, is there a second? Can we have discussion before we have a second, or we have to have a second and then discussion? Well, I'll second it, just to bring it to the table for discussion. Councilman Teetz?
Yeah, I'd like to go through that before we get to council comments, and so, let's go ahead and do that. I'm sure there'll be people that are here to hear about the study session rather than have them stay up all night. We'll let them go to bed at 11:30.
That's interesting. A vote, Mrs. Bittner? Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
I think we have some other things that we're going to be voting on with regard to plowing and that kind of thing, and I think there's some snow plowing items on the...
Is there a snow plowing item?
Later?
It's already covered.
It's covered.
Okay.
No, that's good, no.
Any other discussion? A vote, Mrs. Bittner?
I'm sorry.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Excuse me.
I'm sorry. Councilman Slater, I'm sorry.
Are you suggesting we go into the study session and then come back here?
Right.
To have council comments here?
Is that correct?
Yes, and actually, there are two. One would be to suspend the rules, because that would be taking it out of order, so that would be the first, that's the motion on the table, as I understand it, is a motion to suspend the rules.
That's correct.
Do you anticipate there being a long council comments discussion tonight?
I think after the study session, I think we need to make some decisions about the Transit Center, and that's, it's my understanding. Interrupt me if I'm incorrect, that's the point where that, you know, decision-making would take place, is that correct?
Your Honor, I'll talk backwards. The last slide of the study session update, which is going to be presented by Steve Van Dett, Bill Houdery, and Mark Miller, they're taking care of the update with the exception of the last slide, and I was going to take care of that, and essentially, what that last slide asks the governing body to do is that by the December 19th meeting, there would be two resolutions on that agenda. One would be to approve the architectural engineering contract to proceed with the Transit Center, which at that time, if you spend any federal monies, you would be required to pay them back from that point forward. And the other resolution would be to abandon the project and advise the federal government of that action. So, that is essentially the end slide of the PowerPoint presentation by staff. The purpose, this meeting was to advise the council on update of where we are. We had submitted earlier the environmental assessment that we provided for your reading pleasure. I know it was a boring document. We also supplied a timeline, a chronology of events as a public document here. Also, points of public contact where city councils have authorized staff to do certain things, that we have a PowerPoint that would essentially supplement the information you already have. And then, again, the last slide was going to be, you know, by December 19th, we'd like to have a decision from the governing body as to either proceeding with the contract award for architectural engineering of the Transit Center, or else passing a resolution saying, "No, thanks, we don't want to do this project here." That was the intent.
I would say that it's a kind of an intriguing concept that we have council comments after the study session, because so many times, when we don't have an opportunity to talk among ourselves in a public forum, we lose the moment that we have. All this information is being provided to us. I'm kind of intrigued by the concept of having council comments after the board study session. Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Well, we can have a discussion in the study session as well, and it will give us an opportunity to get the information from city staff, and if there's additional information that we want, if we want to explore things further, if one council person wants to make a point about something in particular we're discussing. It's not just a presentation format where we're going to get all of the information and not be able to respond until the next time that we meet. So, we will be able to have a discussion, or to ask questions, or to point out that there are certain things that we would like more information about. I know just personally, my understanding of the discussion that we had at our first meeting together was that we were going to sort of bifurcate this process, and the first part was going to be to get everyone on board, to have staff present us with all of the same information, so that we were at least coming from the same point where we knew when decisions were made, what the process was, and then we would have an opportunity to explore things more indepthly if we're going to continue the discussion, or when we will be forced to continue the discussion on December 19th, when that contract comes before us. So, I would still like to stick with that plan. It's just been standard operating procedure for these kind of big issues that we do spend time discussing to come at a study session at the end of the meeting. I don't think that anyone here is going to be prepared to get all of the information that we'll get from staff and then jump right into suspending the rules again to then make decisions tonight. I don't think that was our initial plan. So, I would prefer to leave the agenda the way it was. I think most of our diehard fans that come to watch us are used to the fact that we conduct the study sessions at the end of the meeting, and they can take on all the information. And then, that also gives them a chance to hear the same information in the days and weeks that follow, to reach out to us if they heard something that they really want to point out, that they object to, or that they support, or that they think we should be asking more information for.
The council comment section also gives us an opportunity to vote on issues as well, so if there is a consensus to vote on something after a study session, I think it's worth merit. I think it has some merit, but again, Attorney Boone?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to clarify that in order to take action or to vote on resolutions in the council comment section, that would again require suspension of the rules. So, you can do it, you can suspend the rules, it is a possible thing to do, but it would require, again, a suspension of the rules for any council comment action.
So, is there any other discussion? We could have a vote on the suspension of the rules that was brought forth by Councilman Teetz, seconded by Mayor Daniels, to have the study session before the council comments. A vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
No.
Councilmember Slater?
No.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
No.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. So, do we adjourn to the boardroom?
Recede.
Recede. Recede. To the study session, yeah? I'll get this right.
It appeared in three documents actually. The first document was called the environmental assessment that I provided Mayor and Council with earlier this week. The second document was in the agenda, which is also on the website, and essentially gave the chronology of events relative to the multi-modal transit facility. The third piece now is a PowerPoint presentation that was put together by staff, primarily Steve Van Detts, our city engineer, who was a representative on the project. And what we normally do is have staff go through the presentation, and then, Your Honor, you would ask staff members and other council members if they had any comments. And there's an actual discussion until the questions are exhausted. Again, talking backward, the last slide here is to indicate that we'd like to have the governing body make a decision on the transit center to either proceed or else scratch the project by December 19th.
Thank you. Mr. Van Detts?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm happy to be here tonight to give you an update on the transit center, or as its official name is, the Troy Multi-Modal Transit Facility. I'd like to, first of all, give you an overview of this presentation, which I will run through the general objectives for the development of the transit center. And this pretty much parallels what you've seen in the environmental assessment, the goals and objectives and the needs for a new transit center. I'm going to show you the project area if you're perhaps not familiar with it, existing conditions at the Birmingham station, description of the new facility, very brief overview, and recent significant actions that have occurred with regard to contract that has been signed with MDOT and further actions that we're about to embark on as far as architectural, engineering, and construction manager. So I'll talk about the current status, timeframes for these contracts, next steps, and then final thoughts. The general objective for development of a new transit center was to relocate the inadequate Amtrak station to a more accessible site. Strengthen the transit options through a centralized facility, allowing user access to intercity passenger rail service, bus, taxi, and Oakland County Airport. The current transit center, as you'll see by the following slides, allows, does not allow for interconnectivity with other modes of transportation. The transit center won't provide that. There also, an objective is to provide an ADA compliant, safe and secure transit facility and a regional hub. It will be a regional hub in the Detroit Regional Mass Transit Plan with future connections to the Woodward Avenue Light Rail system. And it will also be a regional hub for the Smart Bus System, and that's explained in the environmental assessment as far as the number of buses and so forth. That would be running through the facility. This is a document that comes from the Detroit Regional Mass Transit Plan, which shows the Troy Multi-Modal Transit Facility as a transit hub. And you can see the Woodward Avenue, the light rail improvements, and the various other modes of transportation, such as the green, which is arterial rail transit, blue is bus rail transit, and so on and so forth. You see that these yellow hubs are interconnecting throughout the region. This is a general project area showing the city of Troy in yellow and Birmingham in green, and the location of a transit center, which is essentially on the border of Birmingham and Troy. And the rail line, the CN rail line, is part of the Wolverine Line, which runs from Pontiac to Battle Creek, and it joins up with the Blue Water Line and then continues on to Chicago. The existing Birmingham Amtrak station consists of a concrete platform, semi-enclosed bus-type shelter, a payphone on-site, although I haven't been able to find it. Four parking spaces, which is insufficient for current Amtrak ridership. There are spaces on the street that can be used for parking. I was there today. There is not a space to be had anywhere on the site. And there's no opportunity, as I mentioned, for connectivity with other public or other modes of transportation, such as buses, taxis, and shuttles. This is a picture of the existing station, Amtrak station in Birmingham. You can see on the left the bus-type shelter. That is the platform. And on the right is the end of Villa Street, where the station is located. And to the right in that picture, there is a ramp that takes you up to the platform. And if you, when you get up to the ramp, you walk to your left, you'll see the shelter and this platform, and that's where you would wait for the train. The new facility would consist of 2,400-square-foot building with a waiting area and public restrooms. There would be ample connectivity to groundside multi-modal transportation, including buses, shuttles, taxis, limousine service, et cetera. There would be a pedestrian bridge over the tracks to the platform on the Birmingham side. Some of you, maybe all of you, are aware that there was a tunnel. That tunnel was there when Birmingham was part of the project, and that went away when Birmingham dropped out in April this year. There would be parking for 160 vehicles. That parking essentially exists today. I believe there's 125 spaces that currently exist. It'd be reconfigured slightly for the taxi waiting area and drop-off area, and we're left with 116 parking spaces. There's also area for buses, and I mentioned the taxi waiting area. The four buses that, we worked with Smart. Smart is making this a regional hub, and for their needs, they asked that bus slips for four buses to be there at the same time be provided for, and that's what we were able to do on the site plan. Site, of course, would be ADA compliant and designed using sustainable design concepts such as geothermal, green roof, reuse of water for flushing toilets and the irrigation of the landscaping, with the goal of these sustainable design concepts to reduce overall maintenance costs, energy costs, and so forth. And then areas for commercial concessions, such as food and beverage service, that would be available inside the building itself, and that, of course, would be driven by demand. I apologize, I don't have a better graphic to show you. As I mentioned, when Birmingham dropped out, we had to redesign the site and put in a bridge instead of the tunnel. So I'm just going to give you the highlights of what this graphic shows. Here is Doyle Drive coming off of Maple and then heading east to Coolidge. And here are the four bus slips. Here is the building. And here is the bridge. And here is the platform. And these are stairs that go up to the bridge. And these, this is the existing parking lot, which will be modified in this area right here to provide for a taxi stand and drop-off area, and the handicap spots are relocated up in this area here. This area map sho, um, sorry, shows the existing train station, which is at the end of Villa Drive in Birmingham. And the proposed site is this green patch down here. And this is behind the Town Square Shopping Center, which has Kroger's, Home Depot, Kohl's, and Target, and some other stores. And there's also, part of this development was this condominium complex there off of Significant actions, as I mentioned, in April of this year, Birmingham dropped out of the project due to their inability to acquire land adjacent to the CN Railway. At that time, we had a tunnel under the tracks. We had parking spaces in Birmingham, and we had a ramp up to the platform, and also access, a new access road was being constructed. All of that went away when Birmingham dropped out. And from April until August of this year, we were working to revise the site plan and to revise the EA, which had been submitted in May of 2010. So the Federal Rail Administration had that environmental assessment for over a year, and now we were rewriting it and revising it to reflect Birmingham not being in the project anymore. In September of this year, the revised EA was approved by the Federal Rail Administration. That was after almost a year and a half of work. And we also, in September, approved a MDOT capital contract for almost $8.5 million. This is for federal funding that would be provided for the transit center. That funding, with the elimination of the improvements in Birmingham, trading the tunnel for the bridge was pretty much a wash, but overall, the cost of the project went down because of the, of dropping the improvements in Birmingham, dropping that out of the project. So the cost, when Birmingham was in it, was over $10 million. Now the cost is near $8.5 million. And so it's able to be funded entirely by the federal funds with zero match and zero cost to the city of Troy. In October, the capital agreement that was approved in September started the two-year clock, started October 1st of this year. So we have a two-year timeframe that we must design, take bids, construct, and open the transit center within that 24-month period. That is a requirement of the federal funds, that they be used in the project to be opened within 24 months. September 28th, we put out a request for proposals for architectural engineering services. The current plans are approximately 40% complete, and the architect engineer will take those plans and take those plans to final completion, and so they're in a, they're able to go for bids. Current status of the project also, November is, November 2nd, we received five proposals for architectural engineering services. We just completed our review of those proposals, and that is a contract that we intend to bring back to you by December 19th for your action. September 16th, just last week, we issued a RFP for construction, for a proposal for a construction manager at risk. And those, that contract for a construction manager would be coming to you in February. The architectural engineering service contract, as I mentioned, will be in December, by December 19th, so that we may stay on track, on schedule. It's critical that we, as I mentioned, complete within two years. The construction manager at risk, as I mentioned in February 2012, proposed construction, actual construction would start approximately July of next year, and project completion by October 1st, 2013. This slide pretty much restates what I already said. Construction bids, we are looking at going out for bids around June, after the architect engineer's been selected in December and was able to prepare those plans and specs. Big packages will be going out for site work for building, bridge, and platform, for site landscaping and restoration. And construction time period would be between July 2012 and October 2013. Some final thoughts. As I mentioned, the two-year funding project clock has started, expires October 1st, 2013. And the contract for architectural engineering services will be presented to you, Honor, before December 19th. Approximately $420,000 of capital funds has been spent by the city of Troy for, on the transit center, and that was for preliminary engineering to bring the plans to approximately 40% completion. Also, we had Clark Hill, who was lobbying for funds for this project and was able to get not only the $8.5 million, but also $1.3 million earmarked through FTA, and also a $250,000, actually, that was a grant application that we submitted for
LED lighting?
LED lighting and other energy-saving features. The federal funds, no federal funds, no part of that $8.5 million has been spent to date. But if the project is abandoned, and any funds are spent after we award the architectural engineering contract, and we start our engineering, and we, when we pay them, any money that we pay to the architect engineer, if we abandon after we paid for that service, it must be reimbursed to the federal government. They will take that money, and they will reallocate it to other projects throughout the country. The $8.5 million, as it's been indicated in your material that you got before this meeting, is era funds. It was a competitive process. There are hundreds of applications that did not get funding. And as projects are abandoned, for whatever reason, Florida abandoned some projects and other states have abandoned projects, that money is gathered up and it's put out as the FRA sees fit to other projects throughout the country. And final thought?
As mentioned before, City Council is the policymaker for the community. And once you decide on that policy, then staff executes that policy, if you will. And also, part of our job is to let the mayor and council have a zone of comfort when you make a decision. So you have the background now. I'm asking that a decision be made, I'm going to say on December 19th, to either proceed with the project or abandon it. And we will be happy to answer any questions you have now, up to and including the time when we go to council for the agenda item, to give you all a better comfort in making that decision.
Do we have any comments from council?
What happens after the 24-month time period? Say, for some reason, we don't finish on time, what's the ramifications to the city? Will they move, just real funding?
If the project is not complete, the cost of completing the project will represent the city.
After that date?
After that date. Yep. It will no longer be available.
We would have a cushion, so that, you know, our date of completion would not be October, it would not be the drop dead, it would be about three months before.
Any other comments? Councilman Fleming, do you have any comments?
Yeah. Just looking at the cost of this, eight and a half million dollars for a 2,500-square-foot facility with a bridge across the railroad tracks, with the land that's already donated, 116 parking spaces. I'm having a problem, I like the idea of a transit center, I'm having a problem with the cost of this transit center. It's almost like we were given eight and a half million dollars to spend, and we figured out a way to spend it. Trying to rationalize, I haven't seen the cost break down, build up how this cost is, but even the professional services, architectural, engineering, and construction management, estimated at almost $2 million, and construction, six and a half million. Who can give me some comfort that this is a good value? Okay, we say it's federal money, federal dollars earmarked for this, but we need to be prudent with everybody's dollar and spending everybody's dollar. How can you give me some comfort that spending eight and a half million dollars on a 2,500-square-foot facility is justifiable? The professional services and architectural fees for a 2,500-square-foot facility and bridge is $783 a square foot. The construction cost alone is $2,610 per square foot. So the total project's $3,000, almost $400 per square foot. I can't fast, I can't get my mind around that, having done just a little building. How the project can cost that much? So what am I missing? We're hooking into existing utilities and so forth for the site that's already there with grants. How can we rationalize spending that much money? Okay, it's money that's available, but if any businessperson is going to make that decision, would you do that? Would you do that? Would you spend $3,394 per square foot to build anything short of Taj Mahal? How do we rationalize that? Help me get my arms around that, my mind around that.
May I, Mayor and Council? Mr. Van Detts can provide further breakdowns at a future meeting of cost estimates, but I think you also have to understand, this includes considerable infrastructure above and beyond just a building. We have to build, there has to be a means to get to the Birmingham side of the track to place the platform. And we have to build that platform to Amtrak and FRA specifications, which are very complex. There were options, I mean, you might say, okay, then what are the options if we don't build a bridge and build it on the Troy side? We did contemplate that and had very extensive discussions with the owner of the railroad, which is CN, Amtrak, FRA, and MDOT. And the problem with that is, is we would have had to build new line and track and switching gear, which is more, correct me if I'm wrong, because I don't want to be wrong, which was as much as expensive as the bridge for that. And then, the city would have to take 20-year obligation to maintain that track and switching gear. So really, the issue becomes is, yes, there is a small building, but we have to build all this train-related infrastructure, bridge and platform.
Okay. Mayor? So we had a tunnel to start with. It was going to be very expensive to go up under tracks. So we get away from the tunnel because Birmingham's not cooperating, whatever. So we go away from the tunnel and the ramp that was leading into that, that was taking space. Now we go with a pedestrian walkway. This is not a bridge you're going to drive a car over. This is a pedestrian walkway with, as I understand, an elevator on each side to accommodate ADA. Am I right about that? What is the cost of that bridge? How many feet is it, and what is the cost of that bridge and the elevators on each?
First of all, you can meet ADA compliance without elevators, but you may need to provide ramping, which is space requirements, but we provided elevators. And related to the cost of the bridge, we may have to come back with further information to look at it closer, but Mr. Van Detts?
I don't have the detailed cost with me this evening. However, I'd like to point out that the